Oh, thanks. A bunch of young guys and a bunch of old folks.
Did I do this trouble?
They buy us for us old folks.
Okay, we are gonna reopen, start our budget workshop. A public hearing. Let's start with Baker Tilly, update. Okay.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. Sherry, I'll get you a copy. No.
Dan, I got it. Dan.
Thank you.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
Susan Callen from Baker Tilly. Pleasure to be here again this morning. Give you just a couple of things to consider this morning. I've given you a new summary of the 26th budget. This references the numbers in the budget dispersments column that were submitted and advertised for the budget that we're doing the public hearing for today. Just so you can see again where those ending balances are coming from. There were no major changes in any of the receipt estimates since the last meeting, so those have not changed. Just some of the budget dispersments and some of those estimated ending cash balances for 26 are slightly different than the last version that we had of this on August the 20th. You obviously can review these. Now I'm just giving to you, so I don't want to put you on the spot for questions right now. If you have any questions at some point, please feel free to reach out. The other item I gave you was the, looks like this is the detail for the three-year growth appeal. Debbie, 20-year growth appeal. This Boone County is eligible and we plan to submit this. I just wanted to give you the calculation, how far he were in excess over the required average three-year growth. That three-year requirement was 1.0991, or roughly nine percent growth. Boone had almost 18 percent growth over that three-year time in net assessed value. So that's why you required or were eligible for the appeal. The amount you see down there towards the bottom is, that you are eligible for is $1,670,286. We don't have your net assessed values, so I cannot tell you exactly what that will affect your tax rate. I have, however, calculated what it would be based upon your current 2025 net assessed values. That's the number there at the bottom of roughly 1.8 cents, .0180. Likely, your net assessed values in 26 will be higher than 25. So that means if you were to be approved for the appeal, yes, it will add to your tax rate, but we believe that this would be the absolute maximum number that it would add, and likely it will add less than that. So today, you will need to take a vote to approve moving ahead the submission of the application for the three-year appeal. Debbie has a signature page as part of the application that needs to go. So even if something happens between now and October 19th, and for whatever reason you don't submit it, we at least want to get this taken care of today. So when we do, or if you do as planned, we have that and it's ready and available to go. So any other budget questions? I don't have any general DLGF information or anything new like that to share since last time.
Is that a, is that just a signature, a motion, a vote?
It's basically, you're saying, yes, you as a counsel approve moving ahead the submission of that three-year appeal to the DLGF. It's not, you know, the DLGF just wants to make sure that the counsel has approved, has seen the numbers and approves it before it is turned in for their review. You signed the other years that you submitted the application as well.
I had a question looking at the last, the last schedule you gave us before you left. So the general fund is down to 9.6 because...
Because you made the decision to spectrum off some capital projects.
Right.
And those capital projects, when we discussed, there were some road, there was some, I believe, some courthouse.
Yeah.
Number of things in there. You sort of came to a, a bit of a happy medium between the list that you had and what you decided on to use some reserves, but not all reserves.
Right.
To take care of some of those items.
Okay. So that was like six million bucks, is that right? Six million, roughly, Debbie?
Uh, roughly.
Okay. And then rainy day fund, we were silent on that, weren't we, in terms of...
You're gonna wait till the end of the year to determine where your balances were coming in this year before you do. Because you can't budget a rainy day transfer anyway.
Right.
You can't, so you can include in the budget. You'll just need to make a decision on that at a separate council meeting.
Thanks.
Sure.
Probably solid waste. We're probably going to open the public hearing for solid waste, so she doesn't have to sit through our stuff.
Yes. Okay, we will, at this time, we'll go with solid waste and we'll open it for public hearing. If anybody wishes to be heard on the proposed budget for solid waste, now would be your time to come and speak. You'll have two minutes to speak and you will receive a 30-second warning at the end of your two minutes. No one speaking on the solid waste budget will close the public hearing portion. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. Let's start with the assessors' two budgets. There's two things that we can correct in there. We look at 0008 first. It's my understanding that the RFPs have come in, a vendor has not been selected, but the highest vendor came in lower than what was requested. So underlying in 2325, that's contract, that could be lowered from 685 to 62980. Any discussion or questions for the assessor? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And this, these are motions for inclusion in our proposed budget that we're set to adopt in October. And then, the reassessment fund. What is it, 1?
1188.
1188. This is line 1510. This contract also came in, so that could be lowered from 475 to 338680. Any questions for the assessor? Any discussion from counsel? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Go to area plan. Debbie, was that it for...
For the assessor?
Yes, okay. What did you have next? I was gonna do area plan, but I didn't know. I just want to make sure I'm not skipping anything.
On the counsel, 0061. You guys are trying to increase that to at least 1500.
The statement in conference?
No, meals.
Meals.
You guys like to eat food.
Oh, I see, okay.
So I need that to increase to at least 1500.
Any discussion?
I move that we...
It is.
Oh, 0061.
I move that we, sorry.
Is there a motion?
I move that we increase the 0061 line item to $1,500.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries for inclusion in our budget.
I did not hear back from Brandon Colton yesterday, did you?
I did not. We were gonna look at our TIP neutralization amount because it typically comes in lower. However, we didn't get an estimate back, so we should probably leave that as is. Area plan?
And there is a change in the highway, the new fund for the highway. We had it as 0015. It's now gonna be 1,000, 0529.
Can you say those numbers again, sorry?
We had it as 1,000, 0015. The state does not like that for the highway, so we're gonna 1,000, 0529. It'll be the new fund, county general fund for the highway.
Do we need a motion on that?
No.
Okay.
Area plans next.
Okay.
The discussion is...
0101.
0101, planner and director.
My notes reflect that we were gonna come back to discuss the planner and if we were going to fund this moving forward. I believe there's been some discussion with this at the last APC meeting.
So at our last APC meeting, it was pretty, pretty blunt that the executive director is the way the direction wants to go. Not worry about the planner, the, I think she talked about a part-time girl at one point to that also, but, or, man, whatever. But the issue with not having a director yet is the way it was funded for the pay on it. So kind of the general consensus of, after meeting with the president and the vice president of the APC, is if we could fund the director up to like 120, get a director in there with a timeframe of, like a transition timeframe with Deb, at a point to where that comfort level's there to catch up of what's going on. I'm sorry? No, but that was discussed hard at the meeting, that it was to get posted. And that meeting was just Tuesday at that point. And I believe where it has been, I know the last time it was posted, it was posted, I think, in the, in the, I want to say mid 90s or whatnot. And the applicants that we were getting at that dollar figure is not, not what we would expect or want here.
So does that mean we're zeroing out the 60,000 that you guys have estimated from the planner?
Yes.
So the planner line, which is 3113, is gonna go to zero? Executive director, which is 3111, will go back to the 120?
What was the, what was the last line you said?
Of the director?
Yes.
3111.
1111.
And I think...
Okay, thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong here. I think we approved 120 for executive director, but we put 60,000 in planning consultant and 60,000 executive director. But now we're just gonna put 60 from planner.
Into the executive director.
And technically, they can't advertise that job until after our budget adop, job, budget adoption in October, correct?
No, they have the position currently.
But at 120? Because isn't it currently at 9, only at 90?
I thought we had it at 120.
I think it's at 90.
Yeah. So I just, I want to make sure we don't get it, so they would not be able to advertise this until after our adoption.
Well, they can advertise it. You just wouldn't be able to offer them 120 until January. But they could still advertise.
Okay.
You don't necessarily put the salary amount on there.
Okay, okay.
Do we need a motion?
In two...
We're keeping 60 in the planning consulting for the director? Okay.
So is there a motion?
Say that again, I'm sorry Karen.
I said, are we still keeping the 60,000 that we originally split down here in the consulting?
I would, yes.
Okay. Is there a motion on the planner?
I move that we zero out the account 3113 for the planner, taking it from 60 to zero.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
On the planner, then, we, Debbie, we just need to make note to take out 3,500 NIT for the computer, all that stuff. We can come back to that in a minute. And then, is there a motion for the director?
Yeah. I move that we increase line 3111 for executive director for APC to 120,000. So from 60 to 120.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Do you want to do the IT real quick?
Yes.
Dustin, how is the, how is Jay Kirkman made?
She is on a contract and it's currently roughly, I think the last few months have been 10 to 10.5 a month on that. But she is through, on a contract on that.
What, you know what line she's standing on?
3136.
Yeah, it's the consulting line.
Any consultant, 3136?
So what is, what does it mean?
3136, down towards the bottom of that form one. And I will let the council know it's currently negative.
Right, like, there's not enough to pair in there for the rest of the year.
So what are we leaving in the section?
60 for the beginning of the year until they hire somebody. And then, whatever is left in that line, will go back into the director line once she's done.
Or will it be back to county general, since we just took the planner and put that 60,000 there? So the balance...
It's all, that's county general. So we would just move...
How was that, yeah?
Her consulting line would go back into the director line when she's done.
But we just brought it to 120.
That's what I was trying to figure out, because if we...
With the event planner, or not the planner, we took that 60, zeroed it out and put that in the director.
Right.
So we wouldn't have to move the planning consultant. Because if you move that, then it'll go above 120.
That's what I was thinking, because it'll go above it because...
Well, no, I mean, if you hire somebody first of the year, that 60 doesn't pay them the whole year. You see what I'm saying?
It's 120.
But we just made it 120.
Right, but it's still split. We would have to do it over...
We took the 60 from planner and put it with director.
Right, they tried, this was 60, this was 60, and this was 60. Right. Zeroed that, made that, and they said keep this. Right, but 60 isn't gonna pay an executive director for 2026.
But there's 120 there now.
There's 120 in the executive director line.
I just don't know whether we can leave another 60-something thousand of the planning consultant. If Deb's gonna be gone, there's a new executive director.
Dustin, how long of overlap you think you need?
I could see three to six months, but definitely no more than six, I wouldn't think.
Wait, we could, I just...
It's a lot of money. I'll give you that. I'm not, not denying that one at all. But I think that will also, getting a director that's in there every day will also eliminate some of the staffing issues of being able to keep that door open.
I get it. I'm just thinking, I mean, it's a...
I get it, and we may get somebody that knows more than Deb and they need a month and they were out, right?
Eliminate a huge 50-plus thousand.
Right.
We have 60 too much in there, but we don't want to get rid of the consulting because she's still gonna be employed come January 1st, right?
Right.
Right. There's gonna be a transition, right. There's a transition period timeframe.
So the planner goes to zero.
Correct.
Yes. In theory, the 60,000 in planning consultant line would not be used all of next year.
We hope.
Right, because they'll hire the director, there'll be a transition period in the, but we won't move that.
I wouldn't lower it just because we're in that position now.
That's, yeah.
So it's, I mean, it'd be great if we can hire somebody, but if not, we're gonna be in that same position next year where we're moving money around, so I would do that.
Let's do the 3,500 for IT, which is...
1138.
1138. And is that 9035?
9035.
So we just need to lower that by 3,500.
I move that, I move that we lower account 9035 by $3,500 to account for the changes we just made in APC.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I think that's everything for area plan. Facilities? Facilities, we received an email that I think was circulated yesterday regarding the request to change administrative to facilities executive administrator.
Yes.
And it's my understanding, based on that email, that the job duties and qualifications and description match that change.
Did we get a job description that was requested at the last meeting? At the last budget, we shot them off. And the votes were contingent upon seeing the job description.
Is Amber available? I thought it was attached to the...
I don't see it.
No, okay.
I saw the email, but I didn't see it.
It wasn't attached, okay.
Is the job actually changing? There'll be more responsibility to what?
I don't know. But that was just the level of the workshop last time that it was contingent upon seeing that. I'm assuming because you wanted to compare the two, I don't know.
Is she coming?
Yeah. Do you want her to print something?
No, I mean, just maybe answer something for her.
Um, if we could, because we'll need it for our...
Well, I'm gonna make sure she's got it.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay.
Do you want to jump to jail lit real quick while we wait on that?
Do what?
Can we jump to jail lit real quick while we wait on that?
Yes.
Oh, no, okay.
Sorry, Amber, do you have a job description for the, for Lori and you do? Okay, I don't think we got it, and if we did, I apologize. Can you print that off for us?
The last vote at the last workshop was contingent upon seeing the job description to see if it changed or not. That's the only reason for...
Did you send it to me?
I haven't asked him.
He sent it to the whole council.
Or, or you can give us copies right now if you've got it. Whatever's easiest, thank you.
If you can go grab copies, we'll do the jail lit real quick.
Thank you.
And 1233, is it under 0018, Debbie?
What, I didn't have this on my notes, what?
The hot water heater?
Oh, yes.
Is it 0018?
I would assume, but I don't like to assume.
It's my understanding that we put in, is it 80,000 for a new hot water heater that they are paying for this year, so we can decrease that?
Gonna pay for it on the bond.
Well, they originally requested 270. Was that including it? We bumped it to 200. Is that, if we're to do that, that's something people would have.
I thought we discussed it, yeah.
I thought we included it, but I didn't, I thought we planned for it for next year.
Tony, our sheriff's office. That hot water heater is, that approximately two years ago, maybe a year ago, I can't remember at this point, but our, our existing water heater went down. It took two to three weeks for them to get the hot water heater back up. That, it makes the county liable for a lawsuit.
Right.
So what Max is trying to accomplish there is just a backup water heater in case we lose it. My water heater gets, we got down that line.
I believe Lori is... Lori, can you hear us?
So it's on you yourself.
Word, Rash. Because that was what you know that we were going back and forth with last week before the commissioner meeting.
Yeah, that's this year. The commissioners approved it and it was, and they were paying us in the bond.
Lori.
Yeah, Debbie, so remember, we talked about this and we were like, oh, we can lower it.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask Lori, if that 80 was in that 200. Lori.
Yeah.
On, in 1233, on your budget line, 0018 for jail maintenance, the 200,000, does it include the 80 that we just paid for the water heater replacement?
No.
Okay.
Do you remember where we included that?
It was not included, no, we can get out of the bond.
Okay, and we didn't include it in any of the form ones? Did we have it under county general?
No, we did not. Debbie, you suggested we hand it out of the bond this year.
I believe that the 270 was initially, we lowered it.
Okay.
Thank you, Lori.
Do you know then what the 200, I guess what the 200 is for? Because I know, I think Aaron had a question about like, why do we need $200 for jail maintenance and repairs? Do you remember that, Aaron? We were asking about that. Yeah.
I'm guessing it's the old jail. Lori.
Yeah.
Do you know what the 200,000 that you're levying in 1233 might be for? Is it old jail, jail vote? Or is Max around where he can test?
Here, come, I know.
Okay.
The 200,000 dollars there is for our contracts, our preventative maintenance contracts, and then there's just some other miscellaneous supplies that would come out of that line. Is what that 200,000 dollars is for?
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go back to 02380 then. We just were handed the job description. Debbie, is there another quick one? We could do real quick while she's getting that.
In the commissioner budget, 0068. Need you guys to increase the OASI, which is Medicare and Social Security.
What's the amount? And then, do we also need to increase retirement?
Allison, need you to increase retirement to $1,564,550.
And that's based on just most recent calculations?
Increase, and we really have never increased it in the past. It always gets kind of left out. So I'm also thinking, catch up.
Is there any further discussion for either of those lines, 5153 and 5154? Is there a motion?
I move that we increase line item 5153 by $1,98,328, as well as 5154 by $1,564,550.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And those increases are not a million-dollar increase. I think Social Security and Medicare, I figured it like a $42,000 increase, and retirement was around 60. So between both, it's 100,000.
Okay.
Oh, wait, Debbie, I have a question. Did you say retirement's 1564550?
1564550.
Because the request was, am I... Because the request was, am I reading this right? One eight two eight. So did we go, did we go down on that?
Yes, because we have the highway.
Oh, oh.
Move out into that line.
Got it, okay. So do we need to change? No, we moved, got it.
Because the highway's already moved out of there.
Okay.
That one, yes, because we're going to do it back.
Do we need to go to highway and increase theirs?
No, because we moved it into this line.
Okay, okay.
Um, I did have a question on the voteee for the commissioner. Since both positions are exempt, we don't have anybody that can earn overtime. Can we lower that?
Yes.
To that one?
No, no.
So. We have the executive administrator and the office. Positions, offices, system positions, um, that would go to the eligible for overtime as a current main office.
Sorry, are we on commissioner overtime?
Yes, but you can go back to whatever.
Okay, I, when we were handing this out. Okay, let's come back to, our commissioner's next after we get done with facilities.
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Let's go back to facilities just real quick. We've got the old job description and the new one. Does anyone have any questions?
So she's administrative assistant or office manager?
The previous job description that I had from previous two nine sources was one that's currently under hand, and then he updated one that was sent during the summit.
What was the?
The two biggest differences are that she is now managing, you know, different projects, uh, other projects, not just the Justice Center with the windows, any renovations that get done, that varies from time to time, um, and then she's also the administrator for books now as well. She took over some of those responsibilities that were in the commissioner's office that fell under facilities.
You said she's managing the Justice Center, managing it?
The budget. The claims overseeing those.
That should end.
Yes, so, but yeah, so it's varying projects, right? So we have the courthouse windows. Now, I know that the discussion of renovations on the courthouse, which I'm assuming will also be led by a director of capital investments, so those are things that she would be having.
Was that managed by the project manager previously?
I guess.
So were they both managing?
I mean, once the project manager left, and then that went to, I mean, Kaylee oversaw that too, and then that moved as well to.
I guess what I'm looking at is, what we were told last time to say she's getting a raise because she's taking on more responsibilities.
So it's actually, it's like a very, very minimal increase against that midpoint, but then with the three percent quota that you guys were talking about, they put her over that midpoint for executive administrator, so it actually wouldn't be an increase. It would just be the retitling to what those responsibilities would reflect.
What did the wage salary ordinance, administrative assistant or office manager?
We have, I didn't bring his salary ordinance.
Yeah, we can find it.
Mr. Payal, the window project, that's your knowledge?
I believe that it is.
Yes.
There were some small windows that were refilled and repainted and that. I think that's finished.
They'll be back in three weeks to finish.
They'll be back.
So do we have two things to do here? One, agree or disagree on the title change, and then two, determine what the funding change would be?
Yes.
Can I ask a question or two?
Yes.
So, in the event that we get a county project manager, would this be some of what that individual does? Or would it be overlapping?
Give me administrator.
Yep. You mean administrator, not a project manager? That's, I'm just, not that you, I give you the same.
Yeah, but I mean, if they're managing the projects and that kind of thing, like, wouldn't.
Essentially, Commissioner Payal, would the county, county administrator kind of help manage some of the bigger projects and kind of oversee a lot of it?
Yes, it's director of administration.
Director of administration, yeah, okay. All right, thanks.
So you're saying the pay difference is nominal, minimal?
I believe so. I don't know what midpoint is.
Well, I think in the email Amber sent that I distributed, it was, uh, what, three percent? It goes to sixty-five nine five, and then currently, I think it's funded at fifty-seven oh five oh.
I have it funded at sixty-five five.
Sixty comma five ninety.
That's what I have written down.
Okay. I have it in red.
That's what the request was.
Okay.
Currently, yes, fifty-seven oh five oh for twenty-five.
But, yeah, but the Form One has sixty-five nine oh, which is five dollars shy of what Amber said, so.
And in the salary ordinance, it's, she's just listed as administrative.
Okay.
Or that position.
Executive administrator, so if we.
Administrative. She's just administrative.
Okay, so why do I have executive? I have executive administrator.
That's what they want to change it to.
Thank you.
That's what you're doing.
I'm a little slow.
It is.
Still having coffee. Okay, so, do we want to?
So you can, in my biggest, what I was asking the last thing was just, it was a title change more than anything that the conversation.
That's the way I understood it.
It was like, hey, we're changing the title, and that was the, that necessitated the pay change. And I asked some others to, you can change, if you're an officer, asking someone else to change the title to get a pay raise. So I was asking about the, the job duties that it changes well, and it sounds like it was stated, like three people doing the same job, you know, managing the justice in the projects and the windows are now done, so now that, those projects are over, but this is just now coming in. It sounds like this all should happen, and those projects is already started, and I think that that's the point. We're going to have a county administrator come in to help with these projects, but even if they're, she probably come in. Have a title change for your office.
Daniel Lawson, Commissioner, I think what you have to look at, if you, if we're going to hire an administrator, their duties are a lot different than a project manager. Someone that is going to be on the scenes every day, with the financials and all that, that, that executive director, administrator, whatever you want to call them, that we have the possibility to hire, is to be looking at everything in the county, to manage everything. So, take somebody like Lori that has been doing all this for the last two or three years in the management level. That's why her title is changing, and that's why her pay is changing because of her responsibility. That will not change when we hire a new person to come in, be it a county manager or whatever you might.
Whatever you call them, yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you for the qualification.
Is there any further question or discussion? Is there a motion?
I move that we change the title, uh, to executive administrator for facilities. I don't know, Debbie, is that accurate?
It is. Is this going to be an exempt position?
Second. I think it says non-exempt. Sorry, she was asking. I think this, I don't know if you got this yet, Debbie. We just got it, but it says here. I think it says full-time, non-exempt.
So I have a question. Is it, doesn't Tammy have the same title when she's exempted?
There is no exemption. She's non-exempt.
Well, right this minute, she is, yes, but if you guys change her to exempt, should this would not be exempt as well? It's the same title.
So we all would try to mirror.
I mean, is that?
I think it's a great question. I don't, I'm not sure.
I mean, I feel if one executive administrator is exempt and one is not, we've got problems.
What's, okay, let me, let me withhold my motion, or let's see.
Because we're going off positions.
Let me retract my motion for discussion around exempt versus non-exempt. Do you have any thoughts on?
I know they were moving, I know, it's, it's a good question, Lori. I know they were moving to make Tammy, I'm thinking about making Tammy exempt, but if you're marrying it off the same, you could, it should be exempt in my opinion, but yeah.
That's in the notes, but I would also point out with the commissioners being aboard three elected officials, much as a first deputy would be to an elected official, Tammy fills that role somewhat, to where she does have some.
My first deputy's exempt.
Current. Okay.
So where, you know, even though you may have the same title on things, those job descriptions may not be the exact same, and that's what you have to look at. So she's going to grab her notes.
There she is, right there. Thank you, Amber.
So how can you have the same job description, but vary?
Well, let's, let's ask. Let's see what Beth has to say. I don't, I don't know the answer.
Okay. Yeah, not having the job descriptions before me, I'm kind of shooting from the head blindly right now, so.
We'll take your hint.
I'm happy to go process job descriptions because I don't have those. But I would agree that not all jobs are created equal, so simply because somebody serves as a title to a department head does not, I would not believe would be equal to serving in that same title to an elected person. I don't know that there would be, but again, I have not read these job descriptions. I would have to, I genuinely believe that the commissioner's executive should be exempt under the administrative employee category.
Okay.
I would need to read about the other job description. I don't imagine they're doing the same functions, but again, I'm entirely speculating on that.
So could that, go ahead.
Is the job, for purposes of today, what would really matter is if, if desire is to make the employee exempt, there's a minimum that they must make, what is this salary that you're proposing for her? So you're above that. So the decision doesn't necessarily have to be made today because we're going to do a salary ordinance.
That's what I was going to ask.
Got it.
This year still, so presumably we'll do a salary ordinance by December. Um, so that's when we can ensure that all of these are matched. Is that okay?
To your point, Debbie, then we can, maybe we can have a to-do after today's meeting to say, let's have a review by our county attorney.
Yeah, let's evaluate on some of these that are questions. The, the relevance for today would be on these ones that we're questioning whether they should be, if they should be exempt, they must make that minimum of fifty-eight and change something.
Yeah. That's what I was going to say, so we can do, have the exempt discussion in December.
I guess you can't increase that after October.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I'd like, go ahead.
Isn't what we were talking about, I guess, this Tammy role is highly administrative? It's not a highly administrative function? Mr. Payal, sorry, I'm coming back to you. Is it's not a highly administrative function? Come up. I'm assuming this role is a highly administrative function as well?
I'm going to guess he doesn't really.
Yeah, yeah, I would assume.
Is that Lori's job?
Yeah.
I would assume, I would, I would assume it was, this is a.
We're talking about Lori rap?
Yeah, I would assume it's.
I know it have a lot to do with Lori.
Yeah, but I'm assuming it's the role itself, and it's an executive administrator I'm looking at, but the job duties are probably equally, it's talking about ensuring ledgers are done, submitting claims, submitting payroll vouchers. It's probably a, looking at it as a highly administrative function. Yeah, okay. I'm just trying to compare apples to apples, the same purity belief, it's a highly administrative function, okay.
I'd like to, can I go back to my motion then?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we change, uh, the title for, sorry, thank you, for the administrative person in facilities or capital investments to executive administrator, which is a full-time, non-exempt position.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
And because we're.
Motion carries.
I'm sorry, I just interrupted. Because we're at the, the amount that Amber gave us in the email, I think we're okay within five dollars, so.
Yes.
Is that all right?
Okay. We're dealing that in. Okay, commissioners, I think Debbie said overtime.
Um, yes, I was just asking about the overtime. It's currently budgeted at two thousand. We didn't know if we could lower that to a thousand since the discussion is that two of their positions, three of their positions, or however many they have are exempt. They're not going to need overtime.
My only hesitation, first of all, I think it's, again, a great question. Should we have Beth do the review of the exempt versus non-exempt for the positions that we're talking about today, and then come back to that, or do, and stay high, or, or does it matter?
I'm sorry, I was part of the conversation in the background. Sorry, I didn't hear all of it, but I, at a minimum, there would be one employee who would be non-exempt still of the office assistant.
Okay.
Since it's a random role, you can't really anticipate.
And right now, there's, and right now, there's two thousand in the.
Yeah, yes. Is there any further discussion on that overtime line?
We can. Are we okay leaving it?
Commissioners.
Commissioners.
Thank you. Two thousand. She's, they're saying two thousand.
Yeah, she just kept the same.
Any further discussion? Okay. Debbie, what do you have next?
Um, next, county attorney salary. A job description was requested as well on that one. Contingent upon, vote was contingent upon that job description.
I thought it was the, like, supporting material.
We received the job description in March, April.
Yeah, I thought we got the job description in March or April.
I don't, that's just what was, that's what was mentioned in the, the meeting, in the budget workshop last, last month.
Erin, I thought you wanted the supporting, like.
All of the, my notes say all of the roles need a job description as well, because I remember Kathy was saying, asking about this last one, saying this active commissioner's board is the employee.
I'd be happy to provide you. I'll have that in March and April when you approve this job, but I'm more than happy to go print it for you again if you'd like to see.
Let's go along, let's go along. And we want to have a vote attached to it.
Ones I have listed are county attorney, county administrator.
We received county administrator. They handed that one out to us at the last meeting. I think what was requested was like the, um.
With all due respect, are you doing this for every departments for the county? Are you doing job descriptions for literally every job in the county?
I, I thought.
Because I would start printing them now.
The questions are only the ones that have a large increase.
I thought the back, like, the salary study information was what was requested for attorney and for director of administration, because we received the director of administration job description at our last meeting, but then we got the.
It's proposed, because that hasn't been, because the commissioners are the ones who adopt job descriptions, so they've not actually approved it yet. It was given to you all as a.
Right.
Here's the idea.
What, what did you have on your list? Or the one?
The county attorney salary. Are you increasing it?
No, 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 what was the one that actually got.
Attorney salary, or attorney administrator. H R. And Lori.
But we already approved, I mean, I think we already approved Beth's job description in March.
Well, you don't approve it at all, actually, but it was as a courtesy, it was given to you.
Sorry, we got it as part of.
But I'm happy to provide it today. I just need to go get those. I didn't, I knew you needed the salary dot com information. I wasn't aware that you also needed.
And maybe that's all it was. It's just contingent on salaries.
I think it's, that's what I was.
I think it's salary dot com.
Did not get any of that information, so I'm just going off of what Karen. Did not get any of that information, so I'm just going off of what Karen and I have listed that needs to still be discussed.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need the job description, but I.
Let's get it, let's get it, let's take it as it's ever been.
Well, we're waiting on that. So you guys made the facilities administrative position, executive administration.
Okay.
With a salary of sixty thousand five ninety.
Okay.
She is, that position is currently making more than two of the first deputies on the county. Yeah, please.
Go ahead.
One of the jurors will have to come up.
First of all, please, Debbie, I don't know, we can record, I know this isn't a personality issue at any level, but a concern that I've had for a while, and I've talked, I think, maybe to somebody about that in the past. Um, so, my first deputy gets eight percent of my pay, and my pay is the least amount of everyone's, and that's what this, we're going by. But here's part of the problem, when an administrative assistant, and I don't care what department it is, wherever it is, makes more than a first deputy of an elected official, the struggle comes from this. The job responsibility level is what we should be looking at when we're deciding pay. If I die tomorrow, my first deputy takes over my duties completely and fully. Same laws, same requirements, same responsibilities, until someone is put in in a caucus, which could be thirty days, I think is, is the maximum it could go. If an administrative assist, I'm sorry, if a department head would, I don't know, die or leave or whatever, the administrative assistant does not take over that position. That position is taken over, for instance, in highway, and I'm not, again, I'm not, pointing fingers at a person. At the highway department, his assistant superintendent would take over. If, in the other departments, it would not be that administrative assistant that would take over, it would be the person that would be next in line to them. Now, if this would be an assistant attorney or an assistant HR, they would maybe take over, maybe take over that responsibility until there's an appointment. But what I'm telling you is, job responsibility level, the first deputies have far more responsibility level to an elected official than an administrative assistant, and again, it's based on law, it's not even an option on what can happen as far as that's concerned. And so, my first deputy, I mean, we always kind of consider her exempt, but she's not because she doesn't make sixty thousand dollars. She's the lowest paid first deputy in the county because I'm the lowest paid elected official. So she's not even making that much money. So what I think, and, and I know you guys work hard on this, and we're appreciative of what you do with salaries and what you're trying to get to. We really are, but I think that's something that has to be considered. I just struggle with that a description for a, an administrative assistant would be, have more responsibility than a first deputy of any elected official, as far as that's concerned. It's not because we're better than the appointed officials, everybody has an important job. But we, our, our job requirements are based on law, with audits, you know, I mean, we literally can go to jail when we, if we mess up or do that. And having said that, you know, my administrative, or my office manager, I don't have it. My first deputy works side by side with me, and I always make plans. I train her so that if I'm not there, or him, if I'm out or something would happen to me, she's there to take over and assume those duties. And I think there's a big difference between that and the other job titles that we're talking about now. I just wanted to, you to hear that, and that's sort of why I'm so adamant about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Thank you, Debbie.
Beth. I only have mine, HR.
And like share.
Okay, I printed one for each, so you don't have to share.
Thank you.
This is what was approved. In March.
Thank you.
This is the attorney six. Okay. Okay. This is the salary dot com. Yep. I thought it went out in the.
Yeah.
I thought we approved her salary last week.
We did. It was pending receipt of, I thought it was receipt of the salary dot com study information, which I thought we got in July. Um, we received one late last night, that referenced. So that one's attorney six, this one's attorney five.
Yeah, he's under picture.
Commissioner Byer, do you wish to be heard on the attorney position? Uh, one second, let us turn it up just a little bit. Okay.
Uh, can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Yeah, so what I just, what I sent is just kind of a follow-up to my remarks at the, at the last budget workshop. So, what I sent you is information from the county factbook, and, um, which is based on the twenty twenty-two salary study. Information like that was used for seventy percent of the determination of salaries in the salary study. So in other words, information like salary dot com, which was used as a, you know, the only factor at the August meeting, in the salary study, that information was only used as a thirty percent weight factor. So, I, I understand we're referencing information that was provided earlier this year, but that information is, was just, I mean, it was, it was incomplete. I mean, obviously, a lot of stuff has been done since then, acquiring the salary dot com tool evaluation, but that was never intended to be the only factor to be used to deter, to determine salaries, because that's not how the twenty twenty-two salary study was done. So, what I am trying to show you with what I emailed you last night is something that's consistent with the twenty twenty-two salary study, and then my recommendation for what the salary ought to be.
Are there any further questions?
I'm, I'm trying to break down your email, it's lengthy, thank you for sending it. I guess, Jennifer, where did we get this?
I feel like we got that originally in March or April when we were looking at the job description, and then I thought it went around again in July. I might have pulled it from like the April or March email too.
And then we had salary dot com.
When they were, they were, they, I believe they were looking into it in March, which is then we finalized everything in April, because they gave us the benchmarking for that position, we asked for benchmarking, so it might have been the end of March too.
I'm, I'm, I'm just going over something with Jennifer that she gave us.
Because I had that with the, with this, with the job description. Yeah.
I'm just trying to decipher, like, all of the information. Did, did everybody get Tim's email last night, this morning?
I didn't get it done.
See it.
Didn't see it.
Is that the one that hit at midnight?
Yeah.
Yeah, around midnight.
Followed too.
We're used to getting emails late or writing for me. Can you just explain the last part of your email on this, the, the, the high salary on the factbook for the Hamilton County? And I can't really read this last part because it's in yellow. I don't know if you guys can see that. Around twenty twenty-six or something, based on information, like what you're trying to say there? Or just the bottom part of your salary, the two percent salary county attorney?
Yeah, so the, so the, the Hamilton County attorney, according to the factbook, the highest salary there is one ninety-three, six thirty. And then the next highest in the county factbook is Green County at a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So this, this is kind of the information that was used, this kind of information along with salary dot com was used earlier this year to justify the higher revenue as the county attorney. So. At the bottom, it says, it says on, in the yellow, is that what you can't read?
Yeah.
Yeah, so between the fact and the salary dot com, and using the weighting similar to what was used in the twenty twenty-two salary study. So based on that, it said, my recommendation is that you revise the twenty twenty-six budget for the county attorney position to be no more than one eighty-three, seven fifty, or five percent above the position's twenty twenty-five salary, as I believe is to be fair compensation with the additional perk of working from home some days of the week. That's what it says, if you can't read that.
Okay. And what are these attachments from, I don't know, are you getting these from, you have, you have different salary dot com attachments than what we're looking at, at least what I'm looking at?
So the salary dot com, there's, there's different levels of attorneys, right? And so, the one that I printed is attorney five, which is, uh, which is an expert, it says works autonomically, goals are generally communicated in solution or project goal terms. And, and, and really, the, the point of that is to show that those salaries are consistent with the, uh, the, the Hamilton County salaries in, or salary in the county factbook. Because the average of, the average of those was, uh, I think it was basically the same number, it was about a hundred ninety-three thousand eight hundred fifty dollars.
Did you see this Jennifer, he versus, I don't get it, but like his attachment is different from yours?
Right, this is the, this is the five.
Okay.
Yeah. That's six, yeah.
How many attorneys does Hamilton County have? And how much do they contract out?
Uh, I don't know, they have, they have a range, so in the factbook, they put this the other attachment. They have range, they just have a, the highest range and the lowest range, I can only, I've got attorneys that are on staff there. Highest is one ninety-three, six thirty, and the lowest is one thirty-four, most thirty-two.
Can, can I ask a question?
I can tell you that they have, it's my understanding they have four in-house attorneys, and I'm sure Taff Law can provide you with it. They're getting paid monthly, so to do.
Thank you.
I think we discussed the last time, she takes the health department, and while she's making, doing outside bond work, that more than makes up the raise, that maybe she wasn't required to do when she first was hired.
Uh, yeah, I'm just asking, I don't know if we're getting that next, we're doing that.
This is the one that we're looking to, that's the one that we're looking at, the job description.
Beth, so you got a question?
Yeah, so, with what I thought we approved through the budget hearings, and from what I'm gathering here, that we just needed a job description, am I accurate on that, or no?
Yes, I believe the information that was requested was the job description, or actually, for this position, I thought they were asking for the salary dot com information.
So we have.
But she did not approve that.
I thought we did.
I thought we did.
Yeah, we approved the two twenty nine oh eight.
So I moved to approve, second.
Two, 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 two oh two.
Sorry.
Two, two, two.
Two oh two.
I mean, we made a motion.
It was two fif, two fifteen, seven thirty, and that was a three percent on top of that.
Yeah, it was two, 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 two oh two.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I thought we, and before we.
I'm sorry.
Make a move on the.
He, he, he made a move, he made a motion.
Yes, what was your motion?
To approve, we got the information that was asked for.
So just move for, leave it as a move forward?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
No seconds.
Any further discussion?
Now we'll keep discussing, now, as we were.
Sorry, I was.
No, you're fine.
Talking while the motion was made and.
I think you thought we were just going to move forward, we'll keep discussing it, but keep going.
Yeah, no, okay. Now, we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
As we were, continue discussing it. So then, the, the, I started looking at the amount, so you're asking about the number of attorneys that they have in the house. I don't know who was asking about, John, go ahead, John, I'm sorry. You were just asking about the number of attorneys.
Yeah, she said four, and do, do outside work, contract out.
Yeah, we do outside work, we contract out, I, I, I keep, I, I just go back to it, we asked for the amounts, yes, and we're looking at what the contracted amounts are, how much we're out, we've contracted out health department so far, and I think we're contracting out A P C.
And the R D C.
Huh?
And the R D C.
And the R D C, so we're contracting those out.
I think we get asked up for surveys, are you playing on using her at first year?
We did not fund, uh, we did not fund a separate attorney for them.
Yeah.
They've already made.
Good then. So we're good.
We're good, yeah.
Any further discussion?
Again, I just don't want to rush through.
No, it's fine.
I think, and, and, and we got the, or I saw the three people saying from, it looks like they're going to be.
I think the only thing I wanted to add was, I was one of those people that really wanted to see the detail at the very beginning of the year, and took Scott and Tim to, to task on that, and now, you know, eight months later, I think we're saving at least two hundred, well, it was four hundred and some thousand that we spent last year. I don't have the numbers today, but I think Beth is saving us an incredible amount of money, but also an incredible amount of effort in terms of how we get things done around here, and the things that she's taken answers, I mean, taken questions from. I have no problem with this, I also think this is just a big adjustment to get her where she needs to be. I appreciate what Tim put together, but I also think, you know, it's, it's hard to analyze that based on a number or two, when in fact, they probably spend, they probably spend five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars in the neighboring county. It's, it's a much bigger, more complex county, but I think, I, I'm fine with it, and we're fiscal students, and I say that with a straight face, so. That's all I wanted to say, sorry.
No, I, I, one, I appreciate you acknowledging that, because I'm in the same realm of, I'm in the same vein of thought of, I think my track record, it just speaks for itself, of asking questions on budgets and salaries across the board, for any position. I'm looking at it, I look at the factbook, I've even looked at other positions in like counties. And if I look at it from an apples-to-apples standpoint, you know, we'll look at Hamilton County, we'll look at Hendricks County, and if I look at it, I'm like, there's no other position like this, when I look at it apples-to-apples, that is paying near this amount, two hundred plus thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and if you remember, we're not setting that amount. It will be the commissioners who eventually say what it is. But if you, if you allow that, they can eventually say yes, when I say that, the commissioners can eventually say, yes, we want to pay this. But again, if you give them the room to do it, they can go out and say it. So I'm trying to say, put some parameters around it, but we're not, we don't have, you know, the number of employees, the number of constituents of those other counties, so if you look at it from a caramel, we're not, caramel is equivalent to the town of Zion today. Like, that's not an apples-to-apples, we're county, you know, we're Boone County versus Hamilton County. But again, looking at it, Hamilton County has probably four attorneys, because they have more people to, you know, service and things of that nature. So there's no other county that is our size. So there's no other county that is our size, I think John, who you say was a similar county to our size, constituent wise or population wise?
No, we had that fact book till this last time.
I think Montgomery or someone?
Uh, Montgomery, we're probably more than Montgomery.
Bart Allen U, yeah, but if you go and look at it, I'm saying, hey, here's, here's what is it, an apples to apples comparison. Somebody who looks at it from a cost and a salary standpoint, that's what I'm looking at, yeah, this is what makes the most sense. That, that is what I'm comparing it to, and when you look at the fact book, and I think that's what I'm putting into perspective.
I'd like to echo what Sherry said with respect, and, and just to add on to that. Excuse me, with respect to Hamilton County, not to take anything away from the hard work of those uh, four attorneys who are there, a hundred and ninety-three thousand each according to the information that I received uh, early this morning. I, I would like to add that Beth has come in here and she very eloquently last month stood up there before all of us and told all of us how that when she was hired in in January that she was hired in at, what was it, one seventy-five if I remember correctly, give or take a few. And understanding she was gonna be doing this much work and then all of a sudden everything gets added on and it's way up here now. So with, again, with all due respect to the Hamilton County attorneys, I know they do great work over there, but with respect to Beth, I'm gonna say with all that extra added work that's been comes to her desk, there's, there's, there's not a moment, I, I would like to think that if any one of us as council members called her up or anybody in government that needed her assistance, we could call her on any given hour of the day, she'd answer her phone, I know she has with me and answered those questions for us, I just wanna say thank you for the hard work and that's the reason I seconded Dustin's uh, motion there, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, I believe the motion is to leave as is based on what we did last month, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, okay, um. Let's, okay.
Thank you.
On the county administrator, the advertised one fifteen that you wanted to come back and discuss. The discussion was between ninety and a hundred and fifteen.
Okay.
You guys, for advertising purposes, you put it at one fifteen.
Can, um.
That you need to discuss the salary.
Can we do the H R real quick since Beth just handed us that one, and then Debbie, can I hand you these? Thank you. Um, okay, we just were handed the job description for H R's generalist and then we received, I believe yesterday, the salary dot com study information on that as well. And then I, Debbie, I had a question, on the Form One, that aligns six eight eight zero, the twenty twenty-five council proof budget was seventy-two five one seven, but then it showed an amended one, that was sixty-eight one seventy-four twenty-four. That's what I was confused about.
That's because they, if you remember, they moved her into the human resource line, so they could, so that she would be considered exempt.
Okay, but the, the salary, the salary ordinance is still the seventy-two five one seven, right? So was the three percent on here based on the salary ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, so we did three percent on top of the seventy-two five one seven?
It would be the far right column.
The seventy-four six ninety-two?
We did sixty-nine nine fifteen.
That was at the last meeting, yes.
Last meeting.
Okay, but did you advert, what did you advertise?
We advertised the seventy-four.
You did, okay.
Was it seventy-two, was that seventy-two?
Sorry, seventy-two what?
Seventy-four. Yeah, seventy-four.
So it is seventy-four six nine?
We advertised seventy-four.
Okay.
Because you guys have not made the decision.
Okay, that's where I was confused.
Yes.
With that, okay. Are there any questions? The H R's generalist, I think, Form One says human resource. Do we need a title change?
So is.
What's the title supposed to be?
The job description we received is human resource generalist.
Do you need a copy of this, Debbie?
Yeah, I don't have it.
I want to, I'll just give you.
Here, I have an extra.
She's got an extra.
Yeah, did you, did you, did you look at those?
Seventy-four six ninety-two is what was advertised.
You guys changed it, it was, she verified, it was seventy-two oh one two.
Seventy-two oh one two, so we did not do the three percent on the correct amount?
Sixty-nine nine fifteen plus three percent, so.
Okay, so we should have done the three percent on the seventy-two five one seven?
No, it's six.
No, you guys changed.
She made a motion to do sixty-nine plus three percent.
Sixty-nine plus three percent, okay, what was it, sorry, seventy-two?
Nine nine fifteen plus three percent.
Which was seventy-two?
Seventy-two oh one two.
But we advertised seventy-four six ninety-two.
No, that was a mistake, it was seventy-two oh one two.
She just looked at that gateway.
So do we, with respect, do we have a human resource generalist or a human resource director?
At this moment, I, I mean.
What, what are we, what are we advertising for?
A generalist.
Okay.
You currently have, you're advertising for a generalist.
Is that how it be?
What position are we talking about?
Yeah, because Amber, right now, Amber's title says she's a director.
Well, the Form One says human res, this was one of the questions I had, because we had.
Right now, just, there's, right, well, her email says she's a director, the Form One.
Just as human resources.
Says human resources.
And this says generalist.
And this says generalist.
And one of the questions I had was, at one point we'd received, I think, three different job descriptions. And so one of the things I made last month was, can we figure out which one it is, I think Tim asked us to like push that aside in February, but then never, never came back to us with it.
He can say a generalist, and Tim said that's a generalist.
Okay.
So this is general, so advertising for a generalist.
What we're trying.
Come up here.
We know, we know.
Come up here, so it's on the record.
I, uh, what we know that she's doing after going through all of the different, I've, I've checked with, on the internet, I've checked with A I, I've checked, and I know, or we all know, that she is doing at least a generalist right now. So it, she checks all the boxes for that and that's what we thought we would, we'd just try to get approved as a generalist and then there wouldn't be any more, we wouldn't have to have any more discussion about it, so.
So the midpoint's forty? I don't, I don't know what this is.
Uh, that, that's information that Tammy had gotten.
Oh, okay.
Uh, and it came off a Gateway salary. The, the forty thousand is the administration, uh, uh, administration coordinator assistant.
Oh, okay, and then the other?
The seventy thousand five hundred fifty-five, right, there's a medium salary. And she just, uh, she just gave us that information.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, I think Amber did a nice job, but no degree, very little experience.
She's got, she has a lot of experience, but.
Before this job?
Yes. That other job she's been.
In H R?
In the, in H R, yes.
But that's, that's my only thing is, out in the real world, that somebody with two and three years' experience with a degree in that fifties, high fifties, sixty with a degree, that they're paying off student debt. I think it's high.
Let me.
Now, I might be wrong, so I, I don't know, but I just, looks to me, I guess really high.
Yeah, let me, let me go back. If, in H R, generalists, generalists typically require a bachelor's degree. That's typically required.
We've checked other counties and there are directors that don't have degrees.
And, uh, while the director.
Other than generals.
And while the director may not have a degree, they traditionally move their way up with years of experience. And I'm just, it, it, because here's, here's where I get nervous at. You're hiring someone, again, in a position that has to have experience because of the potential for any mishap that if something happens, that the county is being liable. So if there's a lawsuit, because of any type of nature, the county is, I'm just saying, the county is, is liable for that. Like, let's take out H R for example. If you hired someone from a, for a financial position, right, and there was something that happened and there was, you know, mismanagement of funds and then the insurance company said, oh, well, this person was supposed to be, you know, a C P A doing this role, but they didn't have the necessary qualities. And you can say, well, they shouldn't, they shouldn't have been a C P A doing this role. Or from a legal standpoint, well, they were just a paralegal, you should have had an attorney doing this. Like, in an H R role, you know, a journalist giving that person that title, they should have a degree in doing this. You can say, hey, I wanna have an H R coordinator, but he, if you're talking to someone who has an H R degree, I'm, I'm just telling you, you're putting the county in a position of liability, of liability. So I would just be very cautious of moving forward with that. And as you look at it, you're saying, hey, check and verify, like you would do, like the person in H R would do, trust and verify. I would just ensure that the due diligence has been done. And not just with that individual, with everyone, because that's what's gonna happen as you hire people in the county, they're gonna have to do that. Like you would hire anybody for any position, trust and verify.
Well, we've, like I said, we've checked her experience, uh, we've checked the boxes for her role, what she's doing. She works along the side and what, in her office with our county attorney, if there's ever any question, they can collaborate right at the spot, so I think to help her grow, we will give her the benefit and the past experience of her work and get her into some classes, the H I R A, the, is it H I R A? I don't, talking about things I've read, I don't necessarily understand it, but those are classes that H R can improve themselves in, so. That's, uh, that's what we were planning on doing, and we wanna take care of our good employees, and I think she's a really good employee, so.
Yeah, I, I think she, I wouldn't take that away, I think what John says, nice person, just be careful.
Are there any more questions?
But I think the thing is, the person with the degree has already spent the money and is qualified when they walk in the door. To where, if you're gonna continue education while you're on here, then as you get those degrees or whatever, then you would get that salary. I think it's just a little high.
Yeah, I. You are. I, I feel like I'm beating a, I am, I'm beating a dead horse. We get in our, put ourselves in positions where we like individuals and we say, oh, let's do this, this, or. Why? Like, why, like, like, we, we, we do this for any other person? Like, like I asked, would we do this for any other person? If, if it was a person that, I'll go back to it, would we go and hire someone without the credentials and the qualifications for it? Would we go and hire a person as the planning director who didn't have the skills and the qualifications? I asked every person on this council, you don't have to give me an answer, would we go, we just talked about a planning director. Would we go and hire someone who didn't have the skills and qualifications to be there and plan for it? We would not. If we had to hire someone who was an accountant, and said they worked their way through here, then we needed to hire a CFO, and said, you know what? They're a great person, they've done well, they've helped manage the books here, they've managed brick books, but they're not a C P A and that's what the job was called for, would we hire them? We probably wouldn't do it. We would say, you know what, we're not gonna pay you this amount of money, but you're a great person, we need you to go and do the job, I'm sorry, get the skills and the qualifications. Put yourself in a very liable position, I mean, I cannot stress that enough. And to do that and to ignore it is just dangerous, yeah, I, I, I could not stress that enough, like, I just can't. And you're, and you're talking to someone who has a degree, went to school for five years to get a degree in H R, like, I'm, I'm telling you. Like, if someone comes in here and says, hey, I filed a complaint because I had an A D A accessible issue and I took it to H R and they didn't do anything and this county gets sued for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we lose in court, and they come back and play this recording on September the ninth at ten thirty and we say this, we're doomed. It just, I, I cannot fathom, I just cannot.
Quick question, do we, I look at the job requirements, it doesn't say that a college degree is required, is that correct?
Yeah, it doesn't.
So, so let me, go ahead, let, let, let me be clear, I can, I can create a job, I can go and say, you can be a CFO and a job degree is not required. Let me be clear, you can be a CFO when a job degree is not required, and if you go and you manage the books and you mess up, guess what? You're gonna still be held liable. So let me be clear about that, a job degree doesn't have to be required, but if you're calling yourself the head of H R and you go in and you make a mistake and someone said, I wouldn't talk to the head of H R, you're still gonna be held liable. Oh, because when you go to court and you get deposed and say, oh, the lawyer on the other side of the table is gonna be like, well, what qualifications did this person have? Did you check? You literally just stood here and said, we checked and she has the qualifications, we checked her background and she has the experience, you just stood here and said that. Not putting that, not trying to blame it on you, but you just told us, yep, we checked. Again.
Any further questions or discussion?
What do we need to throw down?
Right now, it's at seventy-two oh one two, and so I think this was just the additional information being provided, um, which I don't know where that falls in the benchmarking.
Yeah, I don't have the benchmark information.
Does the benchmarking, all right?
Yes.
And, and I'm sorry, general, in the corporate, before we vote, Tim, you sent us another email, I'm glad you called me, we're out. Sent us another email about generalist, I don't know if you're talking about that one yet. And I don't know what the numbers were that we got yesterday, so yeah. Sorry, I know you guys are talking about that.
Just for.
Yeah, I don't, uh, I'm a little, I'm a little confused, um, about the, what's potentially being contemplated. Uh, but I think, I, I don't, I don't have a major issue with this item, whether it's, I heard sixty-nine thousand, I heard seventy-four thousand. I think those ranges are appropriate, um, you know. Um. Based on, I, I sent, same thing, I sent information from uh, salary dot com and then also from the county fact book. Uh, you know, with some experience and some education. Um, maybe not necessarily a bachelor's degree, but I, I, I think that's potentially a range that could be grown into. So I, I guess that's my comment on that one, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I, okay, all right, I, yeah, I'm just, I'm looking at it. E- even in the job description that we have, it, it literally says minimum of five years of experience in human resources. Ideally in a municipal, minimum in a municipal government setting. And I think she's worked here for three years. So I don't, I, I, again, in, in the job description you all provided, it literally says minimum of five years' experience in a municipal government setting, ideally, and she's been here for three years, so, y'all can call for the vote.
Any further discussion? So then, based on the salary dot com, the minimum is seventy-four five, the mid is eighty-nine seven, they haven't done the max yet.
Any. Do we have a two-pronged motion, I mean, with the generalist title and then also the money? Or do we just? Or do we just do?
The title change with the commissioners, and then?
Well, I guess I'd be questioning, is Tim still on here? So this job description for a human resource journalist, which is on the table, certainly, is, says status non-exempt. Again, my question is, does she's exempt? They moved her to an exempt position back in March, so what? And they, and they moved her to forty hours, which has to be approved by the council. So I'm not sure where that came from, but it does need to be approved.
But we can certainly, again, go back to claims exempt, non-exempt, I think there's gonna be a lot of conversation that needs to be had with that. And I think it's appropriate because it's yet been said, she has nine years of experience in human resources total. Now, whether that's three years just here, but I think it's important for the council and the public to know. And she's provided that documentation, she provided the resume to the commissioners for them to have. But yes, happy to work through exempt, non-exempt, if a new job description needs to be approved that identifies that.
So we can do that before December for salary ordinance?
Yeah, I anticipate there's gonna be a lot of generally cleaning up of job descriptions and exempt and non-exempt status in the next two months.
Is. I have a question for you. And, and Aaron, I'll use the example that you so eloquent would describe, God forbid if something did happen, and who's ever sitting in that position as the, uh, HR, human resources journalist? And the opposing attorney would say, well, the young lady, young man, what experience do you have? And let's just use Amber as an example. I don't have a top college degree in this, so I'll give you that, Aaron. Now, with that being said, with respect to Amber having nine years of experience, if for a moment she was called into a court of law, would she be able to defend herself? Well, I've got, I have nine years' experience, I know what I'm doing. Would that work in her favor, or would, would the other side still, but you don't have your degree? Would that help?
The job description doesn't call for a degree, so the fact that she doesn't have it is that we haven't hired somebody who's unqualified for the job. I have never in twenty years, and I've done employment law for a decade, that's just part of doing municipal work, have I ever seen a community be sued because of an HR person doing something incorrectly? She's in my office, day in and day out. We get complaints, we get EEOC statements, she's walking to my office, and I'm providing the legal part of advice, right? I mean, that's, that's why our offices work so well together. But I've, I've never known an HR person in the government to mess something up so profoundly that that's actually caused a liability issue.
Okay, thank you. And, and I will say, me personally, this is my opinion, let's assume for a moment the area plan director. Um, Aaron, and if plainly states, if I'm not mistaken, I think it plainly states that you have to have a college degree to come in as the area plan director. But personally, if I know that John Smith has worked as an assistant area plan director in Oklahoma, and he or she puts that application in, I know that plainly states the job description that you have to have that top college degree. But in my opinion, if somebody is worthy enough to come in and demonstrate that, hey, I know this, in and out, hire me. I'm, I'm gonna hire them.
If education is going to be something, and certainly it's somebody who has one, I think education is important, obviously.
Absolutely.
Um, if education is gonna be something that the council pays attention to, and the commissioners need to be considering this as well, this is likely something that's going to have to affect all department heads, right?
Absolutely.
And I, I, I don't know that you'd wanna necessarily open up that Pandora's box, because we have some exceptional department heads who I do not believe have college degrees, who I would be happy to defend. But I would like to be cognizant of, if you're going down this path, then we better make sure that we're doing it equally for all department heads.
Thank you.
We don't, I mean, the council's role is simply to fund the line, not determine who to hire, right? We're just making sure we're in our lane, we're just talking about job title and funding, right?
So should you actually be to?
I'm, 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 I'm sorry, we, we just had a discussion, if I may. Because earlier, the question was, you, you said it, they got into the, just they earlier about who the commissioners were hiring, when it came to the council earlier this year, which gave me, which is my last, I'm sorry, what was your question?
Yeah, should you be directing your questions to the commissioners, since they're the ones that do the hiring?
I assume so. That's up to the director.
What exactly is your question?
My, what my question was, I didn't have a question.
There, there is that one. All right, is there any further discussion between the council? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'm, I'm not sure exactly. Am I, am, are we going with human resources journalist?
I believe that's, yes, that's the position, yes.
Uh, I'll make the motion for a human resources journalist, and are we going with the seven-two zero one-two figure?
Isn't that what was already approved?
Yes.
That was just a title.
That's what was approved, yes.
Yep, okay. I made the motion for that title to, uh, come down as a human resources journalist, at the, which has already been approved only with respect to the income of seventy-two thousand twelve dollars.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, aye.
Are you approving this position for thirty-five or forty hours?
Did you track that vote?
I'm thinking it's four to three, but I don't know for sure.
Can we do a roll call vote, please? All those in favors, uh, or sorry, roll call vote, um, Councilman Reiner?
No. Yes.
Uh, Councilman Lamar? Councilman Puckett?
Yes.
I'm a no, Councilman, or Councilwoman, Richie?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Williams?
No.
Uh, Councilman Van Horn?
Yes.
Four to three. Okay, at forty hours.
Are you approving this, it's normally a thirty-five hour week, when the commissioners moved her to the exempt line, they, I guess, made her a forty-hour weeks position, so I just, and that was never approved by council, so I just need an approval.
Is that something that we would do in December when we're going over exempt and non-exempt? Okay, um, can I ask a question, um, if the council would so agree? I believe it was like two, there was two motions, they're leaving the salary as is and the title change. I guess, I'm not clear what the yes and the no were, so is it possible to break the motion up? Because I don't know if we're leaving it as human resource, then?
See, I thought, too, I thought that the.
I thought the dollars had already been approved. It was the title change.
They were contingent upon the job description.
Right.
Okay, because I thought we were also voting on the money piece as well. I was confused on that part.
See, I don't.
The vote included those he just made.
Yeah, it was both in there, so can, is it possible to break that up into two different motions?
So, I mean, I mean, just so I'm clear, I thought the, I thought the dollar amount was approved in the last month, I mean, I was.
It was approved contingent upon the job description.
Yeah, so we were technically voting on that as well. Okay, so I think we need a motion.
It was a contingency, so we could advertise.
A motion on the title change and then a motion on the salary.
Do I need to withdraw my previous motion?
Well, we've already voted on that one.
What are you saying, yeah, what are you saying?
I mean, yeah, I think you'll need to withdraw it, because I'm not sure what we just voted on.
He said, check.
Okay, my previous motion, I'll withdraw it, and I'll open up a new motion with respect to the title. Uh, human resources journalist?
Okay, there is a motion to change the title from human resource to hu- human resource journalist, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same sign, motion carries. And then now we may, need a motion on the salary, which, uh, last month, we looked at seventy-two oh one two.
And I'll make a motion with respect to the new human resource journalist title to go to seven-two zero one-two, which was contingent last month with respect to a job description provided to all of us as council members, which we received today.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, any further discussion? All the.
What was the, what was the minimum for her?
The minimum is seventy-four five, based on the salary dot com info we got. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, aye. Okay, I believe we care, if we were going to. Um, all right, the next one is the county manager, which we received the job description last month, and then the salary dot com information. Um, so I don't know if we just need to go in, and, I mean, that one again was like pending receipt of information. Do we need any discussion on that one?
Commissioner Hale, we'll bring you back up again, sorry, you did good work out today. Do you have money in your budget to hire somebody now from leftover, if you were able to, to like start them?
Start them before the first of the year?
Yeah, they carry over.
No.
Do you have any money, okay, so, okay, I just, I didn't know if you had money left over. So, okay, sorry, I should, I believe you probably presented that story.
No, you're fine, but not for.
Is there a motion?
Is there for the last month, sorry.
No. He said you gotta ask him off.
Okay, any further discussions?
No.
Okay, is there a motion on this one? Oh, I think.
We're voting, so the discussion last budget workshop was, once you receive the information, you were then determining the salary between ninety and one hundred and fifteen.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay.
All right, one more time. So now we can determine how, right?
Yes.
Back up one more time. So, this person that you want to hire, you have this salary range of ninety to one hundred and fifteen. I'm sure you probably had discussions with the other commissioners. Have you looked at similar positions in other counties?
I've heard, well, I have not yet.
Oh, you have not checked, okay. Counsel, I have questions for you on that. Have you all, have you all looked at other positions in other counties?
I looked at the salary dot com.
Have you?
Yeah. You didn't see it?
I don't, I never got it back.
I didn't get a current.
Uh, no, no, that's just, uh, no, it's a, it's basically a general information. Explained circuit breakers.
What do you, what do you estimate this position, like, how much are you asking for?
Yeah, I think it's, it's gonna depend on the experience type person we have, and your background, education, all that, so.
How much are you, but how much are you asking for between this ninety and one fifteen?
How much are we asking for what?
How much are you asking for, the amount that we're looking at is between?
I think it pays up to one fifteen, is that right? Yeah.
Are you asking for the, for one fifteen?
Uh, I, I don't know what we'll need, I would say yes, yes.
All right.
But then you would adjust that on qualifications, if in fact they don't.
Correct, we might not start somebody in the, I'd be not funded if that.
Okay.
All right.
Based on what you did for, um, the attorney, I have confidence that you guys will find the right person and adjust it accordingly. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we funded at one fifteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Yes.
Justin, yeah, he got it first.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, our motion carries. Um, the HR assistant slash office assistant. Are there any questions about this one?
And the reason they cannot hire a county minister this year is because you're budgeting for twenty-twelve six.
I'm, I, I know they had some changes, like, um, the attorney and all that, but they were gonna shuffle, even though it's not, I know they were.
How much?
Twenty-eight thousand.
And that would be, you know, I'm asking if they were gonna hire somebody this year, to be strong, and figure out like, hey, I know I'm gonna be strong. We don't have a computer, we're budgeting too much. If I do figure it out, I got enough computers, I don't have a. It's, that's not, they don't want to.
What's the proposed size?
Um, forty-nine two forty-two, I think? Was this advertised at the forty-nine two forty-two?
Forty-four, seven, six, nine.
Oh. What was it, I'm sorry?
Four, four, seven, six, nine.
Okay.
Where'd that come from, sorry, I don't.
Your last budget workshop.
Okay.
There was a vote made, it was forty-three, four, six, five, plus three percent.
Okay.
Was there a job description attached to that?
Contingent.
Did you get a job?
Oh, well, yeah.
There was, you did get a job.
This had a thirty-five hour or forty hour?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Remember Amber's?
Yeah.
Oh, it's up there.
No, 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 I just, she had something happen, so she had to leave, we, she and I did not have an opportunity to create a fall in this order for it. I did not create a job description for this hybrid position, we both were working on it and just did not.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, I will take full responsibility.
Was this one funded based on the existing salary study, isn't there an office assistant position in that?
Yeah, and I, I have not seen the salary dot com position on this at all, you know. So I.
I think it was based off the NFP first person one, there's an office assistant.
I mean, this is whatever it has been in the past, plus I need somebody who can file on my case, that's really what this job is.
Okay.
Hey, Commissioner Byer? Can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here.
Did you, did you do anything for this position, too? Did, I need to do it for a bunch of other ones.
Uh, I did not, but, um, I believe it is covered in the salary study.
Yeah, I know, but, okay.
We can request it by October. Do you think you'd be able to get the job description to us by October ninth? Okay, so we would just leave it at, we don't need to do anything on this one right now? Okay, so we'll come back.
Just leave it table.
Leave it in July.
Okay.
Do you wanna change the name, go on that, is that there?
Maybe we should wait, we have the.
Because it's currently HR assistant.
Should we wait till we have the job description, just to ensure it matches? Okay, okay, I'm highlighting that one to come back to. Um, health insurance, Debbie?
Um, I am asking for it to be lowered, again, I ask this every year. Um, the current budget is five million, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Um, last year, moving into twenty-twenty-five, we encumbered almost five hundred thousand dollars. Um, we are currently sitting at forty-one percent in that line. We're gonna have money to encumber again for twenty-twenty-five, moving to twenty-twenty-six. I feel that, um, along with some rebates that we received for a hundred and sixty-three thousand, I really feel you could take it down to five million.
Wow, that's incredible news.
I ask every year.
I know, I'm just saying.
Nobody ever wants to do it, and we have money that just sits.
There's never really good news, and that's just incredible history on the health insurance side.
I mean, if something tragic would happen, we'd have to pay it, I would just come to council, knock on wood. The last couple of years, we've, we've had.
So you would, you would, you would be suggesting a six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar reduction?
What was, what would the new number be?
Five million.
And that account number is, is that line item?
Five one two two.
Five one two two.
I make a motion, well, everyone has.
Is, yeah, is there any further discussion? Uh, is there a motion?
I make a motion that for account five one two two, we reduce it from five, six, two, nine, zero, zero, zero to five million, for a reduction of six hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
On that same front, Jennifer, we. On that same front, Jennifer, we were, I talked to Amber about the HSA, did you wanna, did you wanna talk about that, Jennifer?
Yeah, um, the proposal that the, um, compensate, or health insurance compensation committee, I'm not really sure who came up with all of this, but the commissioners approved the policy itself, I just need the council to approve the amounts. Um, we are wanting to, I guess, we're stopping wellness for next year. They're still doing a, no, she calls it a no year numbers, um, to be, to get the HSA county portion. The suggestion is to pay it out over twenty-five pays, so the county gets, so your employees get a portion of it each pay, which means if new employees come on, currently, they don't get anything, because it's effective January one, new employees coming in throughout the year don't get anything. So this would actually kind of be a benefit.